I'm the one in a hurry up and work it.
I'm down with that for us.
Is that right, bro? Oh, yeah. It's good to see you. It's bad.
How is he gonna go to jail for painting down all those trees? I hope he makes enough money on the rental of the signs to pay the rent. Well, they already signed it.
It's 7:00 PM, November 10th, 2014. I'll call the regular meeting of the common council to order. I'd like to call in Matt and Nick Ostrom from PAC 67, Anthony Morris from PAC 67, James Ostrom from Troop 68, and Ally Ostrom from Troop 229 to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. As most of you know, there was a tragic incident here in Port Jervis where a local business owner, a resident of the area for over forty-six years, lost his life in a robbery and murder now. And I'd like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Joe Kuchar. Thank you. This afternoon, we had a press conference, and I read a prepared statement, and I want to do it again tonight as we have a viewing audience, a little different viewing audience because it was at 2:30, and most people who were working couldn't either hear it or see it. So my statement is, is on Friday, November 8th, "A man from the old world, who is a veteran of our country, working hard for his family as a cobbler, a truly lost art, and preparing for retirement, and an individual from a new world of disrespect and uncaring for your fellow man clashed on Front Street in Port Jervis. This heinous crime shows us the evil that lurks among us. We, as a society, must begin to fight back to save our children and ourselves from this degradation. We will not stop tomorrow what is seen or heard on the TV, on the Internet, or in the radio that glorifies the life of drugs, sex, anger, and fighting. But what we can do is start today to show that we, as humans, care for one another, that we have respect for ourselves and others, that we are not going to tolerate the sickening actions of others. We need to teach our children by example. Teachers do that every day in the school. I see it myself. Building a rapport with our children and with our neighbors is where it begins. We need to take the first step. I see that there is good among us. The outpouring of love and support for the Kuchar family is unbelievable. The caring gestures have not gone unnoticed. The good needs to fight. Fight back with truth, justice, and pride in our American way of life. I watched as our city police officers, along with the New York State Police, Orange County District Attorney's Office, and outside police agencies worked very hard and very quickly to put the pieces together to solve this crime. Our own city police officers, with the innate ability to identify a possible suspect due to their connections with our residents and business owners, worked with those that offered what they could or what they have seen in the police canvas that led to this arrest. This is what makes a community like Port Jervis. In other places, this crime would be a statistical number. Now that the perpetrator is in custody, let us take faith in a 225-year-old judicial system. If the defendant is found guilty of this crime, he is accused of committing. He will hopefully be adequately detained, and justice on earth will be served. As for the rest of us, let us pray for the Kuchar family to get through not only these days of heartache and turmoil, but also during the time that this prosecution of the defendant continues and beyond. Let us be the beginning of change for this new world by following the teachings of the old world in having respect for one another, being honest, helping our community, showing our children that we care and fight the evil that lurks among us by standing strong, reporting to authorities trouble or concern that you witness or hear about. I have faith that our community will not only support one another, but it will rise from this occasion and lead the way to a greater calling. As most of you know, the general election was on Tuesday, and in our local Second Ward election, which we've had a vacancy for over 11 months, Mr. Belcher handily won his position back onto the Second Ward Council. And his term doesn't start until January 1st, but it makes no sense to not make this appointment tonight. So I would like to have a motion on the floor to appoint Mr. Belcher to the Second Ward seat. Do I have a motion?
So do I.
I have a motion by Mr. Bell. A second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Mr. Belcher, if you'd like to come up here. Mrs. Wazaneger will swear you in. Swear, Adam?
Again?
Still gotta take care of the camera, George.
Belcher solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the laws of the state of New York, and the city of Port Jervis, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of councilman of the city of Port Jervis to which you are about to enter to the best of your ability. So help you God.
I do. Mr. Belcher, your plaque sign's right there. If the DPW could make sure that I did find it. Come on in, George. Next, I would like to ask Mr. Michael Compton to come up and do our youth report, please.
Good evening. Tomorrow, there's no school for veterans' day for all Port Jervis Middle School students. Congratulations to the boys and girls cross-country teams for the outstanding performance at State's on Saturday. Kobe Lane, Brittany Fuller, and Kayla Corshie will be competing in the New York State Federation Champion Race this Saturday in Wappingers Falls. Just to remind you that November 25th is a half-day, 10:00 AM dismissal for high school and middle school students. There is no school for all Port Jervis students on November 26th, 27th, and 28th. On Friday, October 31st, students at Port Jervis Middle School had a busy day celebrating Halloween, agriculture, and Port Pride. BJMS hosted its first agriculture awareness day, an event that gave the students the opportunity to speak to local farmers, taste fresh produce, and spend time with a donkey, two goats, and a cow. Thank you to Mrs. Weeble and all others involved for making this event a great success. Both ASK and HBE had police officers in to talk about the importance of safety on Halloween. And finally, HBE is having a Stuff the Bus event to collect non-perishable food items to benefit the Backpack Snack Attack program. This event will be held in the parking lot during November parent-teacher conferences. They will be accepting donations from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday, November 24th, and 9:00 AM to 2:30 PM, Tuesday, November 25th. Together, we can make a difference in the lives of these students at school. Thank you for supporting the efforts. November 24th and 25th, HBE and ASK have half-days of school for parent-teacher conferences and dismissals at 11:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Siegel, do you have a senior report?
I do not.
Hearing none. As far as veterans go, tomorrow is Veterans' Day. For some people who remember long ago, it was Armistice Day. It starts tomorrow. Lineup is at the Port Jervis Middle School at 10:00 AM, and the parade begins at 10:30. It heads from Port Jervis Middle School West on East Main Street down across Kingston Avenue to Pike Street, turns left on the Pike Street, and heads to Orange Square Park, also known as Veteran's Square Park. For those of you that need a picture, it's where the big statue is in the middle of the Civil War veteran, or the cannon is there. And we will have our Veterans' Day celebration there. I'd now like to ask the members of the Deer Park Senior Committee. Come forward, please.
She's not senior.
Mayor, Council, residents of Port Jervis, Regina, and Tippi, and I, if anybody doesn't know me, you'll see a TD here. We're part of the Deer Park Senior Council, and for three years, this is our third year, and we've put on Thanksgiving Day dinner for seniors of the tri-state area. And I have to apologize because this is the first year we've come down, and we should've been here sooner. We should've been here last year. And we wanted to come down and tell you what we've done and how great this event is. We put on a dinner, and it's free of charge, and it's for all our seniors. And you've known that, not to mention our new senior building that we built and we're moving into, but we put on this wonderful dinner, and we open it up, and if the seniors can't make it, we deliver it. And one of our biggest... We feed 100 seniors, mostly in Port Jervis. And one of our people that have contributed to this is Kathy Schratel. And she came to me last year, and she asked if she could help. And what she has done is taken on the Fornham House and Monocanoak Village. And what we do is we get the list, and we split it. And she takes care of that. But in all in all, everything is paid by the Deer Park Senior Council, so there is no charge to Town of Deer Park or the city of Port Jervis. Everything is funded through the Deer Park Senior Council. So we feed 185 seniors on this day. And it's really a wonderful thing because you can't imagine to know that people are being fed. We go to their house. If they need a ride, they'll let us know. We come and pick them up just in Deer Park and Port. We did get calls for Pennsylvania, but we said, no. We really don't care where our seniors are coming from. We offer our building openness to anybody who wants to come. And like I said, we have a list here if you want to see them. We brought some flyers. It is November 22nd. The meal is at 3:00. But we want to thank the Fornham House for doing this because their volunteers come in, and they work hard to deliver to your seniors. And they call us. They tell us each house or apartment complex, somebody takes care of that unit, and they deliver it to their homes if they don't want to come up to eat with us. And it's a well-organized function of that day, and it's getting better and better every year. So like I said, this is our third year of doing it. We do take donations. Somebody from... Could I mention who? Cutback Service Station just told us that no matter how many turkeys we use, just give him the bill, and he's paying for all the turkeys that day. So we're very fortunate that that has happened. But figuring the stuffing, the potatoes, we peel all the potatoes, and we cook all the string beans. You know, so they do get a very healthy meal, and they are very fortunate. So we're hoping for maybe 200 dinners to go out September... November 22nd for that day. And we asked if anybody wants to volunteer that day, whether it be delivery, the Fornham House, up at our new senior center. We set up. We have to clean up. And Michael, who just left, him and his crew, the kids come up from the high school, and we just have... We do. It's a little testy and a little hairy sometimes, but cutting up those turkeys, 10, 12, 14 turkeys, but we have a good time. And like I said, doesn't matter where you live. Our seniors are our seniors, and we try to take care of them, and our doors are open for everybody.
Close to the 22nd?
The November 22nd. Yes, we have some flyers. 3:00 is dinner.
But you would want volunteers before, during, and after?
Before, yes. Yes. So they could call the town hall. Friday night is when we set up the rooms, the dining room. We'll set up the dining room, and that's when we do some prepping with the things that we have to do. Yeah.
So if anybody wants to volunteer to call you?
Call the office. 856-2210, extension 2. And they'll call me at the town hall.
Great. Thank you so very much.
If he wants to open cart those turkeys that day, yeah, because we cook those turkeys. Yeah. Yeah. Well, it's all fresh food. Yeah. That we give them.
That's fantastic. Thank you so very much.
And like I said, I'll just pass these around, and you can see all the houses that... And we deliver them to the houses. If they're inbound, we bring them to their houses. We deliver the food to them. So we do have runners that day that take the food to their houses. We do have pickup service. People who don't have... The seniors who don't have rides. We need people who have to go pick them up and then bring them back home after dinner. So we do do that also. So this is our third year doing it, and it's just a wonderful experience.
Fantastic.
So, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
So if you just want to pass that around my way because this is our question next year.
You'll see on the agenda there's public hearing. It's just there in case we have one and we do not have a public hearing. So we will move into public comment. This is a five-minute limit. If anybody from the public would like to speak about any matter at all, please just state your name and the ward you live in, or if you don't live in Port Jervis, what town you live in. And again, it's a five-minute limit on any subject.
Good evening. Lorraine Marquez, Third Ward. I'm just letting everybody know that on November 19th, the Third Ward will have a Neighborhood Watch meeting at the Never Seen Firehouse. Even if you're not in the Third Ward, you're welcome to attend. And we also have volunteers within our group. If a ward or neighborhood does not have a Neighborhood Watch, we're more than happy to coach you to get going and all because this is all part of everything that you have spoken about, Mayor. We all need to do our part and take our side.
Excellent.
And thank you very much for your kind words you spoke to our heart.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Honorable men, honorable all members, my name's Ted Strachan. I'm from Motorsville. And what I want to talk about this topic this evening really affects us all, affects basic humanity. You mentioned the tragedy you recently had, and that really strikes home because what we've come across, we want to talk about the persecution of Falun Gong in China. It seems very remote, very distant, but it affects basic humanity and the standard, even the standard to be rich, to be a human being, that has been challenged in China. You talked about, you know, a drug-addicted assault on a person. But this is assault by the state. It's state sanctioned. And it has no basis in law and no basis in humanity. And this has been going on for 15 years, and it has escalated to the... It started off not just persecuting these people, but taking business advantage of them. It was in the labor camps that people were sentenced to labor camps. Just as being good people. All these principles are reversed in China these days. To be a good person is to be a bad person. These people practice meditation. They want to be good people, and they're severely persecuted for it. There's no rational reason for this as far as, you know, people in Western countries are concerned. This is happening. It's been happening for 15 years. But it has escalated to the point now that they're using these people that they have in labor camps, although they've been dispersed in other facilities in China, and they're taking their organs because they can. They've become non-people. And this has been happening, and there's various estimates of the number of people who have been killed in this way. It's over 60,000. There's another estimate that's 100,000 people have their organs removed. Basically, they're killed for their organs. And this has been investigated by a number of people and found to be very prevalent. And a number of books have been written on this in recent years. And, well, really, as I say, there's no rational reason for it. But it is a very commercially viable thing. A heart costs $100,000, and you can get one of those within a week if you go to China. You can be tissue-matched and have an organ ready for you. And you can be home within three weeks. That is impossible in any other country. The minimum waiting list is two years. It means if you go there, someone is waiting to be killed who's matched with you. And this is really happening. And so House Resolution 281 is going through the House at the moment. It's over 200 members who have co-sponsored this. But we want to bring this to the local community to allow the local people to add their voice, give them the opportunity to add their voice to this. And that's why we're giving a little talk here this evening, to echo what the House is doing for us.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Tysean. Good evening. My name is Tysean Lerner. I live in Huguenot, just the town of Deer Park. And I'm here also to talk about the same issue of the persecution of Falun Gong. And just in case, you know, maybe you're wondering, well, why are we here at this local town hall meeting talking about this? It's because there are actually, as many of you may know, many, many Falun Gong practitioners who are living locally here within Port Jervis, Mount Hope, you know, the Orange County within this area. Our children are going to the schools here, and we're homeowners and living here and working there. And so this is an issue that's really important to us as a local community. And this is something that is for all of us that live here, and there's over 100 of us, hundreds of us. We work every day tirelessly to try to save people because of this persecution in China. And so we actually wanted to ask you this evening to, you know, we respectfully ask you to vote on a motion that I can give to you. I have a letter here just urging the end of the persecution of Falun Gong at state-sanctioned organ harvesting. So I have the motion here, and I have one for each of you. And, sorry, Mr. Belcher. I didn't expect you here this evening. But I think I have an extra one as well. And just to add to that, you know, maybe you don't know what Falun Gong is, and I'll just briefly tell you. It's a practice of mind, body, and spirit. And we do meditation exercises every day. And we live our life according to the... We strive to live our life according to the universal principles of truthfulness, compassion, and tolerance. It's a practice that was introduced in China publicly in 1992, and it's rooted in traditional Chinese culture. But it's practiced by people all over the world from all different ages and all different walks of life, backgrounds, education status, class. And so we just hope to bring ourselves closer to these principles of truth, compassion, and tolerance in hopes of bringing ourselves more in harmony with the universe and to be better people for it. You may have read about it in The Times Herald recently. There's an article that you could look up online if you're interested in reading more about it. And Falun Gong was covered. Jane Diha is on the cover of it. She's actually a victim of the persecution. And one last thing is that a lot of the people living here are here on political asylum because they have the freedom to practice and do what they believe without being arrested and tortured for it. And so they're here. And this town, as I'm learning more and more, is actually founded by many groups of people who have come here for religious freedom and also for human rights, like the Underground Railroad. So anyhow, I think it's appropriate that we continue to support the human rights and freedom of belief.
Thank you, Ms. Lerner. We probably won't make a motion on it tonight because they need to look at it and research.
Of course.
But perhaps it'll come up. Yes, you may.
Oh, and in my hand in this folder, just so you know, we have actually hundreds of Orange County residents who have signed a petition urging the US government urging the US government to end the persecution of Falun Gong. So this is also not only supported by Falun Gong practitioners, but of course, the local residents, and we collected this mostly over the summer at some of the fairs, the local fairs.
Anyone else? Okay, not hearing any. Do I have a motion?